Hey Lauren.
Hi, everybody. Looks like it's 6:30, so why don't I call to order the Norton School Committee meeting for Thursday, March 4th, 2021? I hope everybody had a good week. We were just together a few days ago, so we have a lot of updates to offer tonight. As I always do, in case I lose my connection, which usually does, it hasn't happened actually the last couple of meetings, so I'll knock on wood, but Sherri, would you mind if I happen to drop off if you could just pick up? For me, that would be great.
No worries.
Appreciate it. So why don't we get started? A vote to approve the minutes of February 4th and February 25th of our open meetings. Dr. Bayada, do we vote on those separately or together?
Separately, please.
Okay, so I think we've all had a chance to look over the minute. Is there any questions, concerns about the minutes for February 4th, 2021? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes of February 4th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Let's see, Sherri?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. And any questions or concerns about the minutes for February 25th, 2021? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes for February 25th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And Sherri?
Yes.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the warrants, Sherri.
I've reviewed and approved the following warrants, school expense warrants, February 4th, 2021, $469,293.19. February 18th, 2021, $371,042.59. And school payroll warrant, January 28th, 2021, $980,067.05. February 11th, 2021, $997,251.31. I wish to enter it into public record.
Thanks, Sherri. So, hey Zoe, hi Malia. We're gonna open the floor to you both. For our student representative.
Sorry if my internet's a little funny right now, but I'm gonna start with the elementary schools. Basically, they've been celebrating Read Across America Week. And for that, it was actually pretty exciting that some of the English Honor Society kids in the high school got to read online over them for Zoom or Google Meet, whatever they did. So that was pretty exciting for elementary school kids. Also, at the Yale, they've been doing March Madness Spirit Days, and that was pretty funny to see some of the younger kids dress up as 100-year-olds for their 100-day school. We don't have much because we just had a school committee meeting last week, but we also just wanted to point out, just saying that the Yale kids are really looking forward to going back to school, where most of them, it seems as though that a lot of them are excited. But Malia has an update for the high school of what's going on with that.
Hi, so for the high school, a big thing last week was talking about getting kids' voices heard a little bit more. So we, Mr. Dolman actually created a survey that he sent out this morning, so we don't have results for it yet, but if it's okay with Ms. Gallagher, if I could share my screen and maybe show some of the questions that's gonna be on it, so I can maybe show kind of what we're gonna be asking.
Sure. Jen, is it set up for Malia to share her screen?
It should be, because she's a panelist, so let's.
It should be fine, Malia.
Okay, alright, so I'm gonna share my screen. If someone could unmute and let me know if they can see this, this survey?
Yes, Malia, looks good.
Alright, so basically it just covers feedback on full return and live streaming. I'm gonna kind of skip over the live streaming part, because we've been doing that for a little bit. But, so we have on a scale of 1 to 5, how excited do you feel about returning to school full-time? What factors influence level of excitement? Scale of 1 to 5, how concerned about safety do you feel when considering a return to school full-time? What factors influence your level of concern? And then one of the things Zoe and I suggested when we made edits was to include stuff about, you know, like morale, like the activities that students want to get back to, because that's the fun part of school, is, you know, getting to see friends and stuff, but obviously safety, safely. So we added that in there with the, you know, what would you feel safe with, with activities? And then, once again, the ideas for celebrations and all of that. So, go back to stop sharing. So, basically, just kind of seeing where people are at, once again, like the back-to-school is the big topic, but, you know, so next week, or next, next meeting, we're probably gonna have results that we can actually share, like, quantitative data with you guys, but, yeah, we don't have much for this week, but I was hoping I could share at least that, so, yeah, thank you, guys.
And Malia, when was this going out?
This went out this morning, but we didn't have data to really cover anything, because obviously only cohort one was in today, so we figured we'd just wait until next time to get you guys, like, the full results, you know?
Sounds good, thank you.
And we love sort of data, right? Qualitative, quantitative, whatever, just getting some info, so thanks, Malia. Thanks, Zoe, appreciate your updates. Is there anything else, Zoe, Malia, or off set?
I think that's, that might be it for me and Zoe. Zoe, do them.
Great, thank you very much. So we are going to move to our presentation by the Norton Charter Commission, and I'm sorry, I didn't welcome you at the beginning, so forgive me for that, but Laura, can I kind of turn it over to you to kind of speak on behalf of your group?
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Welcome, thank you.
Thanks. And if I could just call to order the members of the Norton Charter Commission for meeting with school committee from March 4th, 2021. All the members are present. I do need to apologize. It looks like I'm having a stroke, it's because I had some dental work done, and I'm still very numb, even though the dentist assured me it would be over by now. So, I'm fine. But I just definitely wanted to appreciate, thank the school committee for giving us a chance to provide you with an update. We especially appreciate the time that you're giving us now, we know the stress that you're under, we know it's a very thankless job that you're doing right now in the best of times. I can't even imagine how difficult it's been navigating through a pandemic with the state constantly changing its guidance, so thank you for this time, and we'll try and be brief. As a reminder, for those watching, the school committee's level of autonomy is regulated by the state, it's not granted by the town charter or bylaws, it's required by law to be an elected body. And Section 37 of Mass General Law, Chapter 71, stipulates that each school committee in each town or district has its own power to select its superintendent, approve its budget for public education, and to establish its educational goals and policies for schools in the district, providing that they're consistent with the law and statewide goals and standards established by the Mass Board of Education. So as part of our information gathering, the Charter Commission met with the school committee back in what seems like forever ago, October of 2019, in order for us to determine if they felt any changes or improvements could be made on its behalf where we had the authority to do so. When we met with them, they felt that five members was the appropriate size of their body, given the size of the town and the number of schools in the town. We checked in with them again last summer before we approved the final charter to make sure that that was still the case, and they assured us it was. If you don't mind, I'd like to give the school committee just a very quick general overview of the major changes that the Charter Commission has recommended, and then draw our attention to some specific areas that involve just the school committee. The Charter Commission unanimously recommended a change in the form of government from town meeting to a town council, where the voters will select seven at-large town councillors to serve staggered three-year terms, and they will serve as the town's legislative branch of government. We recommend the retention of a strong town manager appointed by the town council to run the day-to-day operations of the town. This will consolidate the current executive branch power of the select board and the town manager into the town manager's position. These changes result in the elimination of the town moderator. The current finance committee will be replaced by a standing committee of the town council, which may also include members of the public. The recommendation provides the framework to create a Department of Public Works where town departments, including water, sewer, highway, and others, could be consolidated. And under this, the town council would assume policy and rate-setting authority of a board of public works, while the responsibility for the day-to-day operations of the DPW would lie with the director appointed by the town manager. This change eliminates the need for a separately-elected water and sewer commission. Our recommendation lays out a budget process that starts earlier and emphasizes clear communication and collaboration across town government, including the town manager, town council, and the school committee. It establishes new procedures for direct citizen participation in town governance, and it provides for a smooth transition from the current form of government to the new one with the formation of a transition committee, which will provide guidance and direction during the transition to the new format, and it will ensure our government continues to operate effectively. Specific to the school committee, you'll want to take note that the charter now dictates that the town council president call for no fewer than two meetings annually with the school committee. And within the citizen participation mechanisms, you'll note that the school committee is included in the citizen/free petition measure, and that allows members of the public to call for a public hearing of either the town council or the school committee for the purposes of getting a measure passed or a policy set. The town attorney provided us with quite a bit of guidance as to what shouldn't, shouldn't be included in the charter going forward, and cautioned us on burdening officials and boards with processes that are too prescriptive. The charter should provide boards and officials latitude and flexibility to establish procedures and timeframes that meet their needs. She also helped to streamline the charter by removing things that weren't, were no longer necessary, either because they didn't serve a purpose, were no longer, no longer applicable with the change from town meeting, or they were already governed by state law. So one of the changes that you're going to notice from the current charter to the proposed one is the removal of the outline of the school committee's budget process. You're still governed by state law, but there was nothing in that process that was in the old charter that needed to be dictated by charter. And I think Sandy, if you could allow her to share her screen, she's gonna walk you through some of the changes specifically to the budget process, please.
I think Sandy should be able to, because she's a panelist. Sandy, are you able to do that? Yep, I can see that, perfect.
Alright, so, yeah, we just wanted to kind of walk through the, the budget process, some of the changes for that, because I know that's, that's something that you were all involved in, so maybe there's a more interest to you, the details. So we, we started, as Laura said, the process a little bit earlier. It starts in December to just have the department head submit their budget requests, and then the, the joint meeting is now required. I know this is something that, that in the past, you folks have done with the select board and with the finance committee, now we put it into the charter that this is a requirement, that there'd be a joint meeting of the town council, school committee, and town manager by January 15th to sort of discuss priorities and the overview of the, of the budget. The preliminary budget, proposed budget, is about the same in terms of a timeline, but now there's a little asterisk, there's a lot more detail in terms of what we're requiring from that process, which I'll pogo over in just a second for, for clarification on that. The final proposed budget used to be done, due six weeks prior to the town meeting, now it's gonna be the first town council meeting in April. Public hearing, just like there is now, there'll be a requirement for a public hearing for the budget presentation, and then the adoption of the budget prior was done at spring town meeting, and now it's gonna be 15 days prior to this, or due by 15 days prior to the start of the fiscal year. So, you know, again, the preliminary budget and the proposed budget, we had a lot of detail on that. We heard some concerns from folks about the fact that there was a lack of long-term planning and long-term, long-range forecasting from the town and goals and those types of things, so we looked at a lot of different charters to try to find charters that had more detail in them, and we included a lot of those pieces in there. So right now, the preliminary budget, right, the current charter is just a simple revenues and expenditures for the current fiscal year and the upcoming fiscal year, and the final budget has to show the expenditures for the two previous years, appropriated and transferred amount for the current fiscal year, departmental request, and the town manager's recommendation. So that's, you know, the, the simple straightforward chart that we always look at at town meeting, and that's pretty much the only requirement that currently is in our charter. By contrast, so in the new proposed charter, we would be looking at much more detail on the proposed budget and the final budget. They both have to contain a complete fiscal plan of all the town funds and activities, including short and long-term goals and methods to measure outcomes and performance related to those goals. And additionally, both, at both of those stages, the town manager is required to provide a budget message, which make it, must contain, explain the budget, link programs to goals and community priorities, and include some of that long-term policy setting that we, we heard was such a priority, or lacking from our current budget process. So again, we tried to, you know, we listened to a lot of the concerns, mostly from finance committee, I think, was the major group that, that expressed to us that the, the process was less than ideal currently, and we tried to include some more detail in that charter to require a little bit more of that long-range forecasting and planning.
One of the other changes that you're going to note is with the capital improvements committee. The prior charter used to dictate that a school committee member be seated on that, and that is no longer required, because a capital improvements committee is actually no longer a requirement under the charter. It stipulates that the town manager has the authority to appoint one if he or she deems necessary, so we're not intentionally leaving you out. The, the entire committee itself was left at the discretion of the town manager, and they were given latitude to, to do as they see fit. Can we answer any questions from the school committee on this?
Thanks, Laura. Thanks, everyone, for joining us. It's been really helpful to kind of get that quick little glimpse into all of the hard work you've been doing. I'm not sure if any of the other school committee members have any questions, or even, we have a large attendance joining us at our meeting tonight, so if there's any questions, certainly people can put those questions into a chat box. Are there any questions?
I did have one question. When you mentioned it's seven at-large members, I was just, you know, for my own curiosity, partially, and maybe with an explanation, what was the, the reason behind not doing it, like precinct to at-large? Can you kind of take us through how you came to that decision?
Sure, absolutely. So this particular topic was literally the one that we deliberated over the most. It took over five hours. It went across three whole meetings, we revisited it again at the end to make sure that we were, felt, still felt that we were making the correct decision. The two primary reasons for the decision were that we wanted to ensure that all of the councillors were accountable to all townspeople, and we wanted to maximize the pool of candidates that are willing to serve. So we felt that at-large provides more accountability, councillors should not be beholden to any one precinct, neighborhood, project, group, they should be answerable, answerable to everyone. We want councillors that are making decisions on a holistic basis for the good of the town as a whole, not just the precincts in which they reside. And our town is small enough that any decision is affecting almost everyone in some manner. Electing them at large also allows us to maximize the quality of candidates and the choices that are available to voters. A good candidate should not only be able to run when they want to run, but should be able to get elected regardless of where they live. And a bad councillor should not be allowed to retain their seat just because 80% of the voters don't have a say in whether that councillor stays or goes. So because we're trying to reinvigorate, engage the voting population, we felt that precinct seats could lead to further voter apathy, and the best way to maintain engagement is to make sure everyone gets to vote on all councillors in all elections, and anyone can run in any election. And that's kind of the, the summary of our, our main decision there. I hope that helps.
Yes, it does, and it actually kind of triggered one more question, if I may. Now, so this is on the ballot for April. Now, what's the process if this is approved by the voters in April? Like, what's the, what's the next step after that? I mean, not looking too far ahead in the hopes, but what's the process then?
It is a very valid question, it actually does come up quite a bit. So if on April 10th, the voters do approve this question, the select board is then tasked with selecting the date for the election of town councillor, and that date has to be set, and I forget what the parameters, it has to be done, finished basically by the end of June. So it's about a two-month process, during which anybody who's interested in running for town council would draw nomination papers and return them and campaign. The election would happen on a date set in June by the current select board, and from that point forward, we become a town council form of government. A transition committee is formed immediately, and the charter dictates who makes up that transition committee. There's members of the Charter Commission, there's members of the select board, there's members of FinCom, I think the moderators in there, and I think that might be it. And we will work, or the transition committee will work with the newly-elected town council in their first process, which would be finding and appointing a town manager, and then transitioning to that form of government, establishing, you know, how often they're going to be meeting, helping them set their rules and procedures for their, for the board.
Great. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Yes, you know, it's, I just want to say as well, you know, congratulations for the work you've done. It's, it's, I'm sure it's been monumental. I have a few, few friends on the commission that I've been chatting with as you guys have gone through this process. It is nothing short of remarkable, in my opinion, and I personally wish you the best at the election in April.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate that.
So Laura, I just had a question, I actually had the, the same two questions that Dan has already asked, but just one step further, so you had mentioned that positions would be staggered. So how would that work if you are having an election, just because it would be new after it passes? How would you stagger positions when everyone's running at one point?
Nope, give me one second, and I will tell you exactly how that works. It went on, and I keep having to refer to it, because I think it goes by number of votes. So essentially, I think the, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it is the highest vote getter gets, the highest two vote getters get the three-year terms, the next two, or the next three, I forget exactly. It's, it's determined by the charter specifically, and I forget if it's, I don't think it's a random drawing, I think it is determined by the number of votes that each town councillor gets.
And I just found it, Laura, it's the top, the top three vote getters will be elected for a three-year term, the next two get a two-year term, and the next two get a one-year term.
I was close.
That makes sense, thank you. And again, I just wanted to say thank you all for your time. I know that this was a huge effort on your part, you guys have put in a lot, a lot of hours for a long time to get to this point, and, you know, I'm hopeful to see some change happen in Norton, and just personally, I'd like to thank you guys for all you have done.
Thank you, thank you, we very much appreciate that. So just as we stipulated, the election is on April 10th, we're in the middle of our education and outreach right now. Just to let people know, our final report and charter is gonna be mailed to all households containing at least one registered voter, and we're expecting them to possibly be going out as early as next week. If you have any questions, you can also look on our town webpage for the final report and charter. We also have a list of frequently answered, asked questions there as well, and in the coming weeks, you'll see an invitation coming out, as we'll be hosting a couple of information sessions. If at any time anybody has any further questions, you can either contact me directly or the charter as a whole at charter@nortonmas.com. And again, we just would like to thank you for your time, and knowing how busy you folks are, we do very much appreciate the time that you've given to us, and we appreciate the school committee's support on this, on this measure, thank you.
Hey Laura.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Dinesh.
Yeah, sorry, Laura, it's Dinesh. Hey, I just want to say real quick, first, first of all, this is a, this is a great final draft. As, as you personally know, I was, I was not 100% sold on the idea of this to start out, but you guys have done a great job kind of whaling any fears I had. I think it really streamlined the process for the town, makes a lot of sense, quite frankly. The, the one thing I wanted to ask about was, was the budget process. So if, if I understand it, the, the original framework is, is written up by the town manager, and then the town council, town manager, and the school committee meet together to discuss kind of where, where they're at, what their needs are, et cetera, from there. There eventually is a, a public, public hearing on it, and then the town council itself eventually kind of ratifies that budget. So there's not really a methodology for some, you know, for, for people in the town to dispute or change the budget as, as we have now, right? And I, and I'm not saying that's necessarily a bad thing, quite frankly, I'm just trying to clarify to, to myself how, how that process works right now.
Sure. So I, I think you've kind of already gone over it with the, there is the purpose, there is a public hearing for the purposes of hearing feedback on the proposed budget before it is passed, and we would expect that the town council and the finance subcommittee of the town council would take public hearing comments into account when, before voting on, on the the final budget.
Great, perfect, that, that's great, I have no issue with that, I think, I think it makes a lot of sense. Alright, thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you.
So anything else? Thank you, everyone, for joining. Did anybody have any other questions? No? So I think, Laura, the one thing that we can always say about the school department, the school committee, is that we really have enjoyed working collaboratively with the town, and it really is nice to see some of that kind of built into your new charter, not just because we tried to do that, but because it's part of what is successful. So thank you for including a lot of those pieces.
You're very welcome, and thank you for, for pointing them out. It was important for us that we made sure that we heard from everybody and addressed specific concerns that were raised, and I, I think we've met as many of them as we're potentially capable of, so we appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are no other questions, the Charter Commission will adjourn to reconvene immediately following this meeting, in our own meeting, and the chair will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Alright, I'm going to fix the time to which to adjourn, which will be immediately following this meeting with the school committee at 6:59, let's say, PM. Thank you again very much for your time.
Thanks, Laura.
Goodnight, everybody. Thank you.
Appreciate your work.
Thank you, same.
Thanks. So we'll give a minute for them, I think they're all leaving. Looks like we are ready to move forward. Joe, we were going to be doing the vote to approve the MCAS resolution. Is there anything you want to say about that before we vote?
No, just a general thought, you also have a handout that was provided from my association, part of our legislative group, on looking at a number of reasons on why we think this is concerning, and I just want to hit a couple of the bullet points that I know the committee does, but for the public's sake, we think as districts... We think as districts, both for the MCAS and the access assessment, which is the assessment for students of learning English, that first and foremost, that we could better use the time because we're coming out of COVID with students, that there's a better use of thirty million dollars coming out of COVID than to administer an assessment. Interesting enough, you know, the, the dates right now are right around the week of April fifth as the week of actual testing within the state, which is interesting. There's another, a number of other bullets on there, but one of the key ones for me is the idea that districts are doing assessments with students. We, we will continue to do diagnostic assessments with students. That's what we do. That's part of our operations, if you will. And we think that the Commonwealth should utilize those assessments from different districts. And I'm sure they can come up with, they always come up with some type of an interesting formula for how to take a test from anywhere in the world and compare it to our test and then say that we're better, worse, or in between. And we don't understand why they can't just ask us. So for us, we do have assessments that are provided to students. We have grades that are provided to students. You know, we've even in the past had mid-year and final exams that they don't even want to take a look at. So we think overall as an association that, that there's a better way to spend these funds and your draft resolution as a school committee to both the governor and to Jeffrey Riley, the commissioner of education, outlines your support for not having the assessment this year. And that's the resolution you'd be voting on.
So I don't know, does any of the school committee members have any questions or concerns about the resolution as written?
No, I was ready to vote last week.
I was too. So, um, Joe, do I have to read it publicly or can we just vote on it as written?
Uh, we can, you, you can just enter into the record since it's your second meeting that you're doing this.
Okay. So we will enter into the record a vote of the resolution as presented. I did read and I'll, I'll just read again for the public who are in attendance tonight. In light of coronavirus, COVID nineteen and its impact on our schools and students, the Norton School Committee believes it is critical that Massachusetts officials seek and obtain a testing waiver from the United States Department of Education and cancel this year's MCAS test. There is a little bit more to it, but that's sort of the brunt of it. So is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Kathleen?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dinesh? I think Dinesh, I'll come back to him. Dan?
Yes.
I am a yes as well. We'll try Dinesh one more time. Dinesh? I am not hearing Dinesh, so we will move forward with a majority for a vote. If that works.
It looks like he just left, so he might be re, recoming back, maybe.
He may be. Um, maybe we can just revisit that final vote. So we're going to move on down the agenda. Dr. Byetta, the JCS principal search.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Principal Rita Bolton has publicly communicated to her staff and to the families of the JCS, her intent to retire effective June thirtieth of this year. I'm sure at some point we're going to talk a little bit more about that process as, as we celebrate her years of service to the district. But this evening, I'd like to announce to the public and to the committee that the search committee will consist of administrators and family members and, and staff members and school committee member and school level administrators. And we plan to post the position as early as sometime next week. But we are going to go with a third-party firm to do the entire process. We're bringing in the New England School Development Council, NESDEC, of which we're a member of. They will take a look at the entire process for us and then provide us everything from publicizing, not only in traditional ways, but just to, so that you know the intent that I have here. Not only just on school spring, we would normally do it, but also on education week, which is the established publication where this is found on what's called top school jobs. Then they will also be doing mailings to all school districts in the Commonwealth. I get these all the time, by the way. They'll make their announcements to directors, they'll make their announcements to the other development councils throughout the United States. And in particular concentrating on New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Massachusetts, Connecticut, and New Hampshire, Rhode Island, and Maine. They will go out and actually, because they've already done searches, take a look at their recruitment list of candidates that may have been runner-ups, for example, decided not to take a job. To continue, they will also do, and they'll assist with the screening. And then they'll assist to put it together, an interview of the candidates, checking their qualifications, and then putting it together for all of the search team to review and then begin the actual interview process. I will not be involved in the process except to provide NESDEC the information to start the process. I will then remove myself from the process until I receive the final candidates plural for consideration that have been vetted through that process. Much of this is from the, you know, what I've learned in the past. The intent of this is also to make sure that beyond the people on the screening committee, that we have things like parent focus groups as well as staff focus groups with, again, no administrator from Norton Public Schools involved in that process, literally a third party that comes in and tries to collect that data on behalf of families and staff and then provide it to the screening committee, to the public, and then eventually up the ladder to me. I anticipate trying to name a candidate of choice by May, sometime in May, which is typical for us. We're able to do some, at that point, the decision becomes mine. And other internal staff that will be involved with the process, including administrators. Typically, what I try to do is once I get the finalist, I, I go through another process, if you will, of administrators doing their own interviews, our current team doing their own interviews, potentially a site visit depending all on COVID situations. Right now, most of these interviews are happening via Zoom. They're not happening live. But, but I ca, I could potentially see some live interviews at, at, at some point in this process. So that's just informational. You don't need to vote it. I'll need one of you to consider yourselves the candidate. So when the time comes, just send your name forward and the committee can then choose which, which one of you should be on that committee. That makes sense. Any questions?
No questions. I would just like to publicly thank Mrs. Bolton for all of her work over the years. So I was a parent at JCS when Mrs. Bolton arrived. And I'm sure I was a, a more tricky parent sort of as I was navigating elementary school with my children. And I really appreciated kind of the opportunity for her and I to have some difficult conversations. And we probably didn't always agree, but I think we ended my JCS years with a lot of happiness and, and really children, my children were such successful learners there. So I just want to wish her the best, wish her family the best as she retires and hopefully can enjoy a little bit of rest and relaxation after what has certainly been a tumultuous year. So.
I said to Rita, I said to Rita today, and of course, we'll, we'll have some further, more public discussions about her retirement in the near future. But I said to her today, had a nice meeting with her today, and I said to her, I said, listen, I, I think it's a great time to go in many ways. And if I know Rita, she's going to travel. That's one of the things that Rita and I always talk about is travel. Both being from Europe, we really appreciate how close those countries are so close to each other. You can just take a train here somewhere else. But we'll talk about Rita in the near future as well, before we close out for the year. But I, I, I do appreciate those words. Those are many of our sentiments as well.
Any other comments? Keep us posted about the process. We really appreciate it. For those of us who are JCS families, either currently or past families, future families, it's a really amazing place to be. So I know, and I appreciate, Dr. Byetta, you really thinking outside the box a little bit about how we can find the best candidate for one of our schools. So thank you for that. And we are going to move on and just So, Dr. Byetta, I think we have a large group of people who are waiting for an update on a return to school. So I am going to hand it over to you again.
Well, I, in the good days, I would say, I have nothing to say, but that would be taken as a bad joke under these circumstances and everything that we've been dealing with. So let me share a screen with you. Kind of a little bit summation of what's going on for this, for everybody to have. I want you to put it in the other thing first. Hold on. Sorry.
I feel like we should have like a crum roll or something.
Yeah, well, you know, one of the things I have to do is, everybody knows is continue to be better.
You know Karen and Jen are waiting patiently to see.
Yeah, I know they are.
They're all chomping at the bit.
There you go. I found a little chemical thing.
Seen it yet, so it's as much
No, they haven't.
Nice as it is for everyone else.
Yes, it is. It's something I worked on today, returning person information and timeline. And let me, if I can, how do you scroll down on this thing? Hold on. I always get that screwed up. Sorry, Karen.
I think if you use your
Your arrows.
Arrows on your keyboard?
Yeah, I just did that and it wouldn't do it. Just telling you. Hold on.
While we're, while we're waiting for you to catch up with technology here, I, I just, I, I just want to point out to anybody listening or, or on the meeting that a tremendous amount of work has gone into this plan and your presentation. It may not satisfy everybody, but it was what was done to the best of your knowledge with trying to keep everybody safe. And I just want to remind people, like we've talked about before, to please just be kind with comments. You know, let's all get through this together, get our kids back in school and just thank the people who have spent countless hours getting us to this point. Our administrators, our teachers, the rest of our staff. I just think it's important to take a moment and recognize all of you and to remember we are still all in this together.
Thank you. Can you guys, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. So I think, I, I thank Ms. Cohen for those comments and I appreciate it very much. And I do have some, some of other things that I want to make sure we bring up. So tonight I am going to announce specific and more detailed information with a timeline for returning to school in person. I want to be clear about how we have come to much of this discussion. And some of these bullets are not necessarily believed by all. But these are the bullets that we have been using since March of twenty twenty and really specifically in June, July, and August, when a, a group of eight people met practically every single week for hours as a committee and then also by ourselves. We have always used the local town data and the district COVID data to help us make determinations. Let me announce tonight that we had today, for the first time since the fall of twenty twenty, the lowest number of positive and quarantine school cases since this has all started after we got back to school. That's pretty significant data that supports some of the things that are going on in Massachusetts. But I'm really, I'm really happy to see this data. But as you all know, it takes one incident to make this data go a little kooky. We've always utilized health and safety protocols at the elementary level, the cohort model and contact tracing, more of a secondary model, and our health and safety committee consisting of our six professional nurses that work for the district and Vinnie Thirsi, our director of PPS and myself. And then the third part is that we've always considered the vaccination of our staff or at least a timeline for such to be a must. And I'm going to stick to that phrase. Unfortunately, it took an announcement by the current president for us to get some dates. I'm still trying to figure out why that has happened, but maybe for tonight's sake, I'll just say it's above my pay grade. Although the disappointment in that is pretty significant from many of us, regardless of our titles in public education. The Norton faculty and staff since day one, and they could share someday with you the data that they did internally. Since day one, this staff has supported coming back to school in a safe environment. They worked with us in the summer time to make sure of the HVAC systems and air quality, to make sure that we have the PPEs, to make sure that we're utilizing the process. And I don't think that trying to make sure that the schools are safe for children and for the people who work them is a whole lot of an ask. I think that unfortunately, for decades, school systems have been put off to the side when it comes to, to doing preventative maintenance. And I'm happy to tell you, as I always am every year, that although preventative maintenance, as I say, is not sexy, I think it's one of the reasons why we did come back in hybrid, because we were doing preventative maintenance in our district. And I want to thank Wade Lozot and his entire crew of twenty-three men and women for their work in making sure that that happened. The reopening plan will be published next week internally for review by my staff so that they can take a look at it themselves. And then the plan, which includes specifics about transportation, which by the way, that goalpost has been moved to be basically just put them on buses, to classroom and building protocols, recess, and of course, food services, just to name a few. The, those will then be shared with all of you as families and the public in general, just like they were in the fall. The Labor Management Committee, consisting of eight educators, including three administrators, finalized the following plan for the, for Norton Public Schools. On Monday, March twenty-second, we will have day one eighty-two of the teacher and paraprofessional contract for the purposes of professional development. Those days had not, that one day had not yet been used. And we're going to use that day as day one eighty-two of the contract. And there will be no school for students pre-K to twelve, so no DLA, no hybrid, no in-person. Just like it was, we've done once before this year. Tuesday, March twenty-third, the district will open for all students pre-K to five who are willing and wanting to return in full person. So our three elementary schools will open on March twenty-third for that four-week, a four-day week and beginning the following week, five days a week. So we will be open to elementary students on the twenty-third of March and going forward. Transportation information will be released on Friday, March twelfth. Excuse my typo, by the way, on March twelfth. So the release will come from Matt Wells in the Business and Transportation Office, very much wanting to make sure that you have that. In this case, it would be eleven days ahead of time so that you know where your children are going to be picked up, dropped off, all that stuff. We'll do it again when we're talking about the other brick level. On Tuesday, March ninth, that this, that's this coming Tuesday, I will release a return in-person day for students at Norton Middle School for grades six through eight. The start date will be later this month. Again, Tuesday, I will let everybody know. I'm working on some, some issues right now. But I feel comfortable that this coming Tuesday, those families in grades six to eight will be provided a specific date and further details. This is very, I, I'll use the word quirky. When it comes to six to eight and nine to twelve, we're talking about schedules that utilize multiple staff, multiple classrooms, multiple everything for one individual student. And that's the reason why it takes a little bit longer to resolve some of these issues. More importantly, making sure that we are delivering our student services delivery to the needs of me. In March, I will also announce a return day for students in grades nine through twelve at Norton High School with attention to April fifth or twelfth as target dates. However, however, the Norton High School's schedule for return is a significant issue and much more complicated because students are building transcripts. So we are continuing to move to doing some rescheduling of spaces, classrooms, and so on and so forth. We do not want to hurt students' classes by having them, forcing them to move. We have a number of classrooms at Norton High School that are carrying twenty-six and twenty-seven and twenty-eight students and they do not fit at three feet minimum. So that is a concern and it's going to require some moves. We have a beautiful renovated high school, but remember that the internal classrooms, except for the labs, are all nineteen seventy-one classrooms. It was just, they were taken down to the, to the, to the bone, but they were not expanded in general. Must-dos and haves. Champions will remain open and have limited availability. Must do's and haves. Champions will remain open and have limited availability. I spoke to them today. They are working on plans for parents immediately. Food services will stop delivery as of 3:15. Those in need must go to the high school during that week. Lunches will be at six feet. That continues to be the recommendation. Although down below, you will see that there's information on number 12 about 310 from Desi. That means March 10, we're expecting information on lunches. This continues to be what restaurants are doing. Unless you're a family, you're six feet apart from others, it's it's a continuation of when you're not wearing your mask that we in fact have six feet. Classrooms will be at no less than three feet and as close to six feet as we can. In many areas that will be able to be done in some areas, they will be closer to three feet. We have K95 masks for all staff. I can assure you that's not something that's being done in every district. I would like to personally thank and publicly thank Chief Simmons of the Norton Fire Department for being able to get those to us. Down below on number six, I would also like to thank Chief Simmons and his staff for training all of our six nurses on COVID testing. Now this COVID testing is only for staff, only for employees. And it's part of either contact tracing situation or symptoms. The wonderful thing is it's no later than the 48 hour return. We've actually seen it happen. I've actually know some of our staff that have utilized it. Our nurses are trained. It's wonderful. By the way, our nurses are also incredibly trained on giving vaccines. We just need the vaccines. We have plenty of PPE to take us into the fall. We have ordered over, we have ordered 500 elementary desks in order to move the desks that were taken out of the classroom and put into individual seating in the cafeterias and gym for lunches at six feet. Be move those back and bring in the new ones or combination of there so that we can keep the social distancing. We are also in the process of getting tents for outside for lunches. Again, maintaining six feet will require that items like heating and all of that are all being considered as part of the tents. Each building has a working committee to address building level issues. These are staff members working with the administration who will review daily issues and address those daily issues in their schools. And communicate with my office as needed. Norton High School will also have a student committee for return to school. Who take in the principal's office, issues and concerns that students have as part of their return. And tomorrow, Desi and the Board of Education will vote on some of these new requirements coming from the commissioner. And potential, we may hear about dates from them as well. I would like to reach out and thank the following administrators that worked with me and my staff. First and foremost, there's no one who's worked harder on this than the Norton Association President Shannon Taylor. In trying to not only balance the requests of her colleagues in the union, but also making sure that she is prioritizing children. And to be quite honest, it's not said enough, but Shannon has been back in the classroom. Four days a week running a specialized classroom while at the same time doing all of that. Say Jack, Leanne Leclaire, Jerusha Bjork, Christine Fay, make up that team. These are all teachers and one paraprofessional representing that group. And myself, Vinnie Cersei, Director PPS and Jennifer O'Neil, of course, Eric is the superintendent. Without those two, I'm not sure that I could be doing anything. However, when it comes to this part, but there's so many administrators in the back and I don't want to just say names because I'll miss somebody and I'll feel bad about it. But I want to thank my entire administration. I want to thank the school committee for their continuing support and pushing me to get this done. As well as my support staff in the in my office that have really gone a long way. I said to the staff today and I didn't put it on here, but when I look at support staff, I want to, I want to thank the next few weeks of hell for our custodial staff who will be moving tables and chairs and keeping the building safe with extra cleaning and everything else. When you see one of them thanking for me, there will be a lot of communication coming out of these offices over the next few weeks. And I want to thank the support staff in those situations as well. And of course, that's what always does its thing. Flexibility, kindness and forgiveness have been the three words I've used all day. So that's my next step. And then lastly, the class of 2021, I probably have not spent enough time reaching out to you. But let me guarantee you a couple of things. Number one, we are looking through parents and and student leaders and the principal and assistant principals office at class trips, the prom, class night. They're all being considered considered based on pending info from the state. We're keeping all eyes open, if you will, ears open and eyes wide for all of this. And I and I can tell you today that I'm 99.9% sure that unless all of this data throughout the state goes negative. That I'll be able to shake your hand or at least give you a high five or do something on June 4th. And provide you with your diploma. That date, eight has not changed. The vicinity facility might not be Xfinity Center. We might have to have it on our football field and rain dates and all of that stuff. But we are sticking right now to June 4th, bringing the graduation date for our senior. That is the general overview of what's happening. We will continue over the next few weeks to be providing you updates that is specific to timelines and issues. Couple of the curveballs that could happen in any of this are things like the date of the the delivery of the desk right now are ahead of time. But what happens if they don't show up? We're going to have to have a plan for another plan for lunches. Tents, that's a big one right now as well. And then I'm looking, happen to have a mentioned technology. But I know Karen, for example, is looking for some of the technology that needs, not to necessarily be upgraded, but the lap, the laptops, Chromebooks. iPads need to be plugged in appropriately in the classrooms and so on and so forth. So we need to to do all of that. So that's the big picture. That's what how we're looking at this. Hopefully that data continues to to move in the right direction. I need everybody listening tonight to understand that what I mean, when I, when I note flexibility, it's really, really important for us to know that at any point. Your child's cohort in third grade, for example, could be home for a week or two weeks because of a positive case. Those rules and regulations to date have not changed. So just like now, if you have a student who comes into the building and they're in that classroom and they're part of the grade three class. Now we're talking about both cohorts together. That would mean the entire classroom is is being quarantined and going through that process. Contact tracing is done at this more at the secondary level because kids do move on a regular basis from classroom to classroom. So now the contact tracing may not be at six feet, actually maybe at three feet. So you're going to have potentially more students under the regulations that's that have to go home and stay home for X number of days, be potentially tested. If anybody reads the paper, the Globe today had a an interesting article about how we're seeing some issues with with people, not enough people still getting tested. And so, you know, that's a little bit of a concern, especially with the age group of students where vaccines are still not available. But at the end of the day, I feel that it's time. We have a plan. Again, this is not just throwing out dates. We've been, as you know, for weeks now, been looking at all of this in a lot of detail. And we'll update you with changes as they're needed. Hopefully they're all changes that just announcing more information, information. Et cetera. I know there's some questions, so I don't know if we, you know, want to take some of the question.
Can I hop in here real quick before we take any questions?
Sure.
And I want to apologize. Yeah, I'm I'm losing you guys occasionally. I'm in a bad spot, but. So so the high school right now is is the real, the real hurdle, the high hurdle, I guess. And and we're talking about maybe April 9 is a is a possible, possible earliest on the spectrum right now. Is that correct?
Denise, I think the date's April 5 as the earliest, April 12 as the second.
Right, sorry, but sorry, April, April 5 and April 12. And for K to five, we're talking about March 23. That's that's the date that we kind of have in in place right now. So six to eight, we don't have a date yet, but is is it fair, given that the high school is is where it's really problematic? And we know that the the K through five is going to start on the 23rd. Is it fair to kind of look at the 23rd to the fifth, that area for six to eight right now? Is it is it safe to kind of read between the lines?
That would be fair. Yes.
Okay, great. Because I think that that'll give some clarity to the parents of the, of the six to eight. So and I just want to say really quick, Joe, the great plan. I'm really glad you you brought this together. I know it was a pain in the rear and I and I know it's kind of been, you know, it's it's been a lot of stress for everybody. But I think it makes a lot of sense and and completely understand that, you know, conditions on the ground can change very quickly. And and I'm glad you kind of pointed out the, you know, the whys and wheres of that as well. So thank you very much for your efforts. Appreciate that.
Sure, there's a couple of things there's that I didn't mention, then I know the questions are coming up. So the the district will be asked to have a model, have a model that responds to the vote of the Board of Education tomorrow. And that is a in person model. It is not a hybrid model. So our leftover models are the DLA or full or or full return. There is no hybrid model going forward. So that's important because I know some families have already asked about that. A lot of that has to do with who teaches the hybrid? How does that happen? We are not continuing with live streaming as an option within the full remote. Prior to COVID, it was mandatory that students come to school. And I think that's, to be quite honest, where the state is going. They are mandating that districts have in person. And the idea of quote, choice is limited to DLA or remote and DLA parents who can choose to send their students to full, I mean, or excuse me, in person or DLA. DLA parents can choose to send their students in. The data is also pretty clear in those states that started with hybrid and went to remote. That there have not seen, when, excuse me, language. Those districts that went from hybrid to full in person have not seen increases in COVID situations. Those situations have been limited to a classroom, not limited to closing the school, for example, or even sections of a school. And that's that's data that's been provided. It's actually a pretty, pretty out there in general. April vacation is still on. The traditional calendar is still being followed. Students that go home because of a situation, those are in the elementary quite easy to take care of. Because usually it involves the teacher going home with the students and therefore they would be teaching from home is the typical standard that we've used. At the secondary, it gets a little, a little tricky because it's multiple staff. So they may, for example, be in a science classroom situation, but now we have to worry about all the other areas. And that's why this thing, under the testing protocols that are out there now are very important. Because you can get tested on day five and literally be back and you don't have to be waiting until day 14, like originally was thought of. The students will go back on week one of K to five, four days. Only because March 22, there is no school for anyone district wide. No students are in school. It's a professional development day for staff. Thereafter, for that grade level, it'll be five days a week. The remaining grades will start on a Monday and be five days a week as of that Monday. So that's just to clarify that for all. Summer vacation is still summer vacation. Our end date right now is June 17, I think it is. Is currently the last day of school. Next week, it's going to be in the 60s. We'll be complaining about how hard it is on the third floor of the middle school. And and then from there, the other part is we are working on some. We have our traditional extended school year programming for students who are getting student services throughout the summer. But we are also looking at some other academic support this summer for students with attention to students in current grades kindergarten through five. So watch out for some of that information to be coming out probably as we get closer to the budget season being done and making sure that we can do it. We're also waiting to see if S3 money comes from the federal government for some of this. This is not a perfect plan. It has many moving parts. But we will prioritize the safety of your children as we have. We will prioritize the safety of the staff. It's wonderful that starting on March 11. Any educator who wants to be vaccinated, maybe. I know that many of my staff this morning got opportunities to be vaccinated. There was a, I can't tell you how many teachers I I heard from today that are being vaccinated as early as I believe the earliest I heard was tomorrow afternoon. And Saturday, I have two of my staff members in the central office being vaccinated. So there's definitely a push and 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 the the industry definitely wants to be vaccinated. And I think that our staff will do everything that they can if they so too want to be vaccinated to to do so. The champions, I did mention, there is a a question about champions in middle school. I put that out there today to champions. I spoke with them this morning at about eight on a phone call. And just put out there that, you know, there may be a need for champions at the middle school this year as a part of a transition. Just because, you know, one of the number one things about coming back to school for you folks as families, for myself as a, as a father is ability for people to go back to their regular workday. You know, and have to, but still have to worry about things like after school hours or before school hours. So champions will be communicating and if we have numbers, we will absolutely support that in any way, shape and form. Even if we have to move them from one school to another. It's not really liked by middle school students to have to come to the yell or that type of situation. But we have done that in the past in order to support a family. So if we have to, we will and and if we can. For my staff, we continue, we will continue to support our staff in terms of making sure that if if their children need support, we will do what we've done since the beginning of this because it makes it easier for us as a district to have our staff be at work. And if anything that we've learned is that there's a lot of love from the public employee sector. But I'll just speak for my staff about having availability of of programming for their kids in order to make it easier for work as well.
Joe, can I just ask a question or or just offer some insight? So I think we all know that there certainly is two kind of I think feelings about this. I think that there are plenty of families that are ready to come back and want to come back. And obviously, we're, we recognize that that is sort of the the process that we're moving towards. But I think that they are still, Joe, are families that either have been in hybrid or remote, who who really aren't comfortable to come back. I know you mentioned the reason why hybrid is no longer an option. It just is no longer allowed by Desi to to be a sort of form of of learning. So we know that that isn't an option, but can you speak to sort of hybrid families, Joe? What options do they have available to them? If they're just not ready to come back to school or, you know, are there options?
Right. So I don't know how many options there going to be because at the end of the day, the 303 districts in the Commonwealth are all being told that if you've been full remote, you have to go to hybrid. And if you've been hybrid, you have to go to in person. It's kind of, it's being dictated to us. So if you remember, we started with what do you want your plans to do and give us three plans? So we did DLA, we did hybrid and we did full return. And then we did all of that and then it wasn't enough. And now all of a sudden we have hours by week instead of hours by year. So I don't know if we're going to have a true option. And then the question becomes who? Who is providing that instruction? And that's the biggest, that's the biggest issue right now is who are the staffing? And and it's at the elementary level, I guess you could say it's a little easier at the high school. The idea of finding a physics teacher right now or a math teacher right now, not going to happen. Now, we have made a commitment to our current DLA staff. And so there's the potential to transfer kids into that DLA. But again, at the high school level, that is a nightmare and even at the middle school because of things like elective classes. And where they are in the process, they may be further ahead, they may be behind. So that would be concerning as well. You know, the biggest issue here, I had a call today and I'm not really answering the question. I know that. But the call today was a family that's worried because they do have serious medical conditions in their home. And and I get that. But we'll look at individual cases as best as we can. I think we do that as a district pretty well, but I can't make any guarantees.
Joe, do you recommend for families that are anxious about kind of a full return or have questions about a full return that perhaps need to be answered?
Yeah, so next, yeah, next week. Yeah, next, next week I'm going to release a coffee hour with the superintendent on just for families that have. I hate to say it, concerns. My goal is to also have a family. Once I release the the plan to have. Um, once I release the uh, the plan to have a kind of like a K-DA five meeting and just let anybody to come in. And I can go over the plan with people. Um, I plan to do that the week before we come back as well. Um, and and of course, I can, I can always be reached, and I do respond to phone calls and and all of that. But I, I do think that there's going to be um, some real concerns and questions, and I, and I get that. They, 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 these are honest, fundamental issues that are happening in people's homes and concerns. But we'll also have the coffee hour to maybe try to see if we can come up with some um, some situations, if you will, to support that.
Thank you.
Joe, can I just, um, I'm getting some messages sent to me. People are asking what DLA is.
So that is Digital Learning Academy, which is the full parent choice remote only. So that has been, you've decided to keep your child at home the entire time. They were never in school. Um, or in some cases, they, they left and went to DLA, and they're utilizing the uh, Florida Virtual Program for Elementary and Edgenuity for Secondary. Thanks. So one of the things that um, a question that's come up or comment is about being home, kept exposed and being home K-DA five level fourteen or plus days. So a couple of different things. Number one, remember the elementary is a cohort. Now, the only time in elementary is not a cohort would be in a lunch situation. But if it happens within a classroom, those, those now combined cohort one and two, Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Friday is now one class. If something happens in that one class, then that entire team is home. The staff members involved in that classroom are more than likely also home because they're a cohort. It's not the six feet fifteen minute thing. And then added to that, um, is our push to parents to have your children assessed. Right now, the recommendation is on day five of the time period from day zero, which we could easily inform. We do inform you through our nurses, um, what day five is, and then you can get a test. And in some cases, these tests now are, are, and it should be a, a regular PCR test. The, the response on those is a lot quicker, which then would allow folks to be back significantly earlier than than day fourteen.
I think the question, Joe, is actually asking, um, when that class is out. Do they have any um, kind of online instruction by the teacher?
So I passed history with this, um, and I know, Jen, if you want to add to this, but the past history that we had is when we've had a cohort go home. That cohort is home as well as the staff member, and they are teaching students from home as part of a school day.
That's all I was going to say as well. It's um, a remote day. Every day is a remote day.
So if I can ask, maybe Jen, I can ask you. So if every day is a remote day, then potentially everybody comes back at the same time? Or does that mean that um, children who are? So how does that work? I guess I'm just trying to kind of vis- kind of visualize that.
There, it's, I listen, we've had students that test on day five and are back right after that, and we have students who stay until day fourteen. And those are choices that have made.
Sort of the, the entire classroom, so the students who are still out on day seven, day eight, day nine. They're, are they just receiving work from the teacher? Is that how it works?
Potentially, yes, but that's a choice that's been made. That's a choice that's been made.
Well, because they can come back on day five. I understand.
Well, they can test on day five. They can test on day five and with no symptoms walk through the door earlier than that. And I don't have the day in front of me, but we can publish that. They don't have to wait. And uh, what's happening now is a, there's a, a lot of people choosing not to test and be out for the, for the fourteen days instead. And we get that. I mean, it is what it is. I mean, you know, uh, that's, again, that's a, that's an individual parent guardian decision, not mine. Um, someone asked about middle school sports. There is no active league for middle school sports right now. That's one of the biggest issues. Um, but uh, again, we'll continue to, to see if um, if there's other things available. We have talked a little bit about intermurals um, happening, um, maybe, you know, in, in May and June uh, just as a way to give students an opportunity to stay after school. But right now, um, that's not really in the plans yet.
In regards to busing, if somebody has a question about busing, who can they contact?
Uh, please contact Matt Wells, M. Wells, W.E.L.L.S. at Norton, or you could just use the Let's Talk. And he is getting a ton of phone calls and a ton of emails. And uh, that's why we also announced the uh, next Friday, we will be republishing, if you will. Um, correct me, Matt, all of the pickups, and we're trying to stick to some of our past routines that have worked for us so that people can just look it up and know, okay, that's where my pickup is. And that's all I have for you.
Any other questions?
Um, any, uh, anything to do with drop-offs and pickups, that will be also further explained. We are making changes specifically at the JCS, but you'll be hearing about some changes all around when it comes to that. Um, again, you'll, you'll be hearing about that before the, the first date um, for K-DA five, pre-K-DA five. But um, yes, we recognize that we have to make some changes. We're also trying to really push parents to get their kids on the bus. Um, the cost for the rest of the year is very inexpensive. So, you know, it's an opportunity to, to not have, um, you know, we got people parking at two thirty in the afternoon for a three thirty-five release at the JCS. We have to, because the lines are all the way out to, to um, one twenty-three, so we have to figure that out.
And Joe, just to mention, that's why we've developed these building-based committees to really be able to look at the core issues at each of the buildings. For example, pick up and drop off at JCS or the car line at LGN. Um, our staff know their buildings better than anyone else, um, and working collaboratively with the principals there. Um, that's the best way for us to kind of resolve those issues. So stay tuned. More info will be coming.
And Joe, can I just confirm um, all of the information that you shared tonight will be going out via email, just as?
Yeah. Yeah, we have a general information, email, uh, email communication going out at seven AM tomorrow. With attention to K-DA five, there'll be more information that goes out um, early next week. Um, as we um, have more and more information and updates. But yes, there's a general email going out tomorrow morning at seven to the district.
There's a question here, um, Joe, about volunteer hours. I'm not sure if that's regarding um, our high school students.
I would assume it is regarding our high school students, and um, please don't quote me. I don't know, is Terry um, on the line? She might remember better because maybe she was taking minutes. I think we had voted earlier on and um, by majority vote, we had voted that they would not be required for graduation this year. Does anybody else remember?
Yeah, but wasn't, wasn't that last year's class?
I think we voted again, Kathleen, for this year's class as well, but only for seniors.
That is, Vinny presented that, so.
Yes, yes, this year for seniors. That is correct.
Thanks, Vinny. I couldn't remember who, who I should ask. So Vinny to the rescue.
Carolyn, so that you know, and the rest of the public that's asking, I think we have to, we have a lot of questions about a full return. What we're thinking of right now is kids back in the building and all of the issues that that's going to deal with. And then everything else around the traditional school year, we will address as we go. Update people that, in fact, we're not doing anything with the seniors with the hours. But are we thinking of, you know, volunteer hours for, uh, you know, all of that, I think are things that, that are just going to be answered as we, as we go, more than just on day one, we're going to have them. The, the other part is that um, the um, when, when you, um, when you look at all of, for example, somebody's asking uh, about um, about um, students that are playing in other leagues, those are, those are decisions, what by town leagues and leagues that they've decided to. Norton Middle School currently is not playing sports. It could, but currently that is not in our plan for reopening. Um, and that's regardless of who the middle school students are or high school students, because there are high school students playing right now as well and only in hybrid. And um, those are, our fields are being used after hours by some. Uh, but right now, um, the cool league that we belong to, um, i- is um, not participating in uh, in sports. And um, I can get an up, I'll get an update for the republic, um, for not the next school committee meeting, but the one afterwards, because the next school committee meeting is just a public hearing on two, two topics.
Joe, do you see those two questions?
Yeah, so once again, if your child is a third grader at the ACS, they are considered one cohort, every student that's in that room. So now Tuesday, Thursday kids and Wednesday, Friday kids are together as a class. They are now a class cohort. If you have a positive situation in that classroom, all students and adults in that classroom must quarantine. That's the, that's the, the, the CDC guideline, that's Desi's guideline currently, could change tomorrow, but that's been the guideline since day one. So that means that those students and that staff member all go home. They're all learning from home with their same teacher. Okay, the second part is, we push our adult employee, especially if they have no symptoms, to go get tested on day five. And I, and again, I don't want to say the day they can return, but it's less than fourteen, and I think it's ten or less than ten. They can return, um, if, if not symptomatic, um, in, in um, a, a negative test and all of that. And some students are doing the same thing. Again, it's a parental choice, uh, schedule situation and all of that. And then class resumes once the adult is back in and students are back in. Typically, they very much come back together. In some cases, one or two kids doesn't because of personal choice, inability to, and those are some of the families we can always work with. Uh, but that's the, that's the, uh, that's the, that's the way it's been happening since September. Uh, we've made no changes to that. Now, if you're a second, or if you're a secondary student, that's totally different because that's based on six feet um, of, of uh, contact tracing. So that's um, that's the way that it, um, that it works.
Joe, and I, I just want to say to our school nurses and our district nurse have been fantastic at communicating with families. Um, you know, sending out a consistent message to the students that are um, have to stay home to quarantine. And they do a really, really nice job of being really explicit about when you can test and when they can come back.
And and Katie, um, as a panelist on, she, she writes, they can return on day eight if they test negative on or after day five, and that may be Katie, our nurse, uh, who's also a resident.
I believe it is, Joe.
All right, and uh, the guidelines for classrooms, uh, we will continue to attempt to be closest to six feet regardless of where we are, but we know we're going to be at no less than three feet wherever people are, except currently, the regulations are, when taking off a mask for the purposes of, in this case, lunches. We will maintain our lunch rooms and lunch areas at six feet. And in some cases, it's even bigger than six feet or longer than six feet.
Joe, do you have any um, kind of idea? Or have you heard any kind of rumors about what is going to be released um, by Desi? I think tomorrow there are by the state. I, I don't remember. I think there's sort of a announcement tomorrow. And then I forget the second date. There's a, another announcement. Do you have any idea what that's regarding?
Yeah, so the tenth, the March tenth announcement is supposed to be guidelines on uh, food services or lunches. So, you know, once again, um, you know, it's, it, it's going to be interesting, but you know, we, we're, we're, um, we're at six feet. And that's what we're seeing, um, that's what we're hearing. And um, I think it's, I think it's the right, the right approach, the safest approach. Um, but again, uh, we could be hearing, we could be hearing things like grab and go. Um, that's been a discussion that a lot of schools are currently doing. They've been doing it since September where they're releasing the students at the secondary level, specifically at the high school. They're leaving for, they're leaving school earlier. Um, so they're not, you know, they come to school at seven forty and they leave at one o'clock, and that's when they get their lunch. Um, and they just grab and get on the bus and go. I'm not sure that I'm a fan of it for a number of reasons. And, you know, if we have to stagger more lunches, then that's what we'll do. Again, the high school lunches for me right now, especially with the weather getting better, our, our students love to go outside. With the younger kids, I think they will too, but again, weather permitting, um, and that's why the tents are important for us.
But no um, update on what the conversation will be tomorrow that you're aware of?
Tomorrow's conversation will be to implement section six oh, uh, uh, six oh three, section twenty-seven or whatever, how they call it. They will vote to mandate in-person or and or from, from remote to hybrid or from a hybrid to full in-person. We don't know if they'll be, uh, the regulation won't announce a date, but they could announce dates not in the regulation.
Understood.
Hey, Joe, a, a quick, quick thought for um, you and maybe also for Karen Winsper. Um, be- because you guys are going to get question after questions, there are a ton of calls. Is it possible to set up a database of questions that are coming in with their answers on our website? So that people can go to the website first, peruse through that and maybe see a question that they have and see the answer there rather than have to reach out to somebody directly?
I believe that the recording takes down the questions, but I may be wrong, and I just have to have the communications office take the questions and create them into a sheet, which is, I think, what we've done in the past as well with other meetings.
As usual, you're on top of it.
Well, I can assure you that I can say, you can say I'm on top of it, but, but I'm going to defer to one of my wonderful colleagues that works for me that is probably doing it. It just makes me look good, but I know they're the ones that are doing the work.
And that was a collective you.
I think, um, there's a lot of questions that I'm sure everybody has. I, I'm not sure we have the answers to. As Jen has shared, um, there will be individual building committees, um, or, or school building committees that are really looking at a lot of these questions about, I would assume, Jen, transportation, lunches, how all of that will kind of work. And I, I don't know if we can answer all of that specifically today. Um, but I think it's a great idea to absolutely, um, maybe sort of start um, a, a kind of question link on our website, you know, sort of um, most ask questions, and maybe we can start to, you know, kind of gather some, some information. But I, I think some of the questions, we just might not be able to answer at this point. I think.
So Carolyn, next week, um, as, as we said earlier, next week, we're going to release our plan. So it's got a transportation section, a lunch section. It'll have information, and our goal is to then take that general information and then bring it down to the building level so that when a parent is asking, they're, they're saying, oh, my child goes to the middle school. How's that going to be? My child goes to the JCS. How's that going to be? So it becomes much more of an individual question, if you will. We will absolutely put the questions on, on the site. We have an entire dedicated section on our website to COVID. Um, this will become like the next level of it. Um, the letter tomorrow, uh, the press release tomorrow actually talks about going to that link for updates. I'm being hesitant to release the plan right now because I don't know what that three-ten situation is going to be about lunches. And I don't want to cause a controversy about lunches, except to say that right now, we are maintaining six feet. We are going to be using gyms and cafeterias, which we have been doing. There's probably going to have to be multiple lang- uh, lunches. There's a question there about that from a, a Yell parent that may happen. Uh, but then again, we may be creative and be able to use half of a gym with the full cafeteria and a tent outside, and we can have three lunches and not six lunches. So those are all the things that we're going to work on at the local level, really, starting Monday.
Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
I think at this point, um, I, I know there are still questions. Um, I'm going to just ask everyone, you know, to be patient. More information will be coming out as we kind of, you know, get more information, I think, kind of as a recap for what we spoke about tonight. Joe, I'm not sure if you, at this point, I don't even know if you specifically said, I think that email will be going out tomorrow morning. Is that?
Tomorrow morning, yeah, general information tomorrow morning to all families coming from uh, my office, the communications office um, for the detailed information starting um, Tuesday.
Perfect. So, um, if we didn't answer your question tonight, just bear with us. You can always use the Let's Talk. You can reach out. Um, but I think by the email that comes tomorrow and then further information that will start coming on Tuesday of next week, um, hopefully you'll have all of your questions answered. So I really do appreciate, Joe, I know that um, you had shared, um, your, your thanks to Wade, but Wade, um, I'm sure I can speak on behalf of the school committee. And you have been such a good leader in all of this, really making sure that our buildings were safe, um, making sure that we had um, preventative maintenance happening throughout this entire time, making sure we had appropriate PPE and, and everything in place. So I'm not sure if we, if I've ever thanked you publicly, but I will thank you today, Wade, so. And of course, um, our admin team, um, Jen, Vinny, Karen, who's on here, Matt, um, really, um, I'm sure I'm forgetting, but. thank you. I I think that we absolutely know the amount of work that has gone into this. And then certainly um our staff, who is led by Shannon Taylor, who clearly um has the best interest of not only her students in her classroom, but all of students of Norton. Um you know, it's been a challenge for sure, but I think that we definitely are moving in the right direction for most. Um I do absolutely appreciate and empathize families who remain concerned and really will ask you to reach out individually um to try to have sort of your questions answered and to think about other options um that may work better for you. So thanks, everybody. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Question, Joe, um now that we've, you know, let everybody know what the plan is, um you know, after everyone had to wait and and now we've put that information out there. Um it seems we have some people asking the question. Um now, if we're going to be sending kids back to school with three feet distance, will this committee be meeting uh in person with three feet distance? So maybe you could answer that, Joe, for people who are now commenting about how we meet.
Committee um uh has been informed by by me um that we would also begin our live meetings in the month of March um as um not only a best practice, but also to support our uh staff and our students as they return to school. Um and we will be at six feet, not three feet, as is the requirement for uh open meetings, uh and those will, I think, become uh taped at Norton Middle School. It'll probably be in the cafeteria, not at, excuse me, uh yeah, either cafeteria or auditorium meetings. Um and they'll be uh probably taped. Um um hopefully, we can do something with zooming, but they could be uh more taped than they are live. That's the one thing about the Zoom situation here that makes it uh easier. But yes, I have asked the committee to consider um going live for our meetings beginning uh towards the end of March.
I also just want to point out, Joe, that that there have been uh many of us, never a quorum, but some of us with with staff members in a uh in a conference room, sitting around a conference table meeting on certain issues. So I think it's important for the public to know that not only you guys as administrators, but also school committee members have absolutely been into the schools and have sat in uh conference rooms, having meetings with staff uh uh on a, you know, a ton of issues or a ton of subjects for the last year. I I I think people think that we're just kind of behind the computer, having these meetings, and I just want to be very clear that we have gone in to sign bills, we have gone in to have meetings. So we are, you know, we we we're not just sitting behind our computers, having these meetings.
There'll be lots of opinions about uh not only you, but myself and and anybody who um is dealing with this situation. And I, you know, one of the things I've learned about um COVID, um I've had tremendous frustration frustrating days. Um and I will continue to work hard um for the students and the and the staff of Norton and for the Norton School Committee. Um but I'm also going to take comments like that in one ear and completely out the other.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but did we vote that we could um? We had talked about before even COVID happened about um I don't know if it was zooming in or having a conference call in if we were unable to attend. Um is that something that we did?
It continues to be a push from the governor's office. It just happened the other day that public meetings continue to be via Zoom because of a concern, excuse me, that's my new pump for concern for people uh not knowing who's going to show up. You don't know if you're going to get five people show up and have enough room, or if you're going to have a hundred people show up. I will also tell you that I've never had a hundred fifty six participants at a meeting uh or three hundred and fifty like I've had for some of my meetings. I think if anything, for many of my busy family uh family members, I think the future for much of what I do to make it easier for them, and I'll stay in the office and do it. I don't have to be at home. Uh I'm gonna I'm gonna utilize Zoom as a cool way to um get our parents more engaged and active with decisions and issues. Um and school committee, I think, is is the um is the same way and and so on. So um again, uh yeah, you you know what? You're doing great things. Uh we continue to do the best that we can.
Yeah, guys, we had a lot to cover. So as far as how we conduct our meetings, I think I think we can probably move on from that.
Got it. I think um we definitely can move on. I think one of the things I just want to sort of clarify is that we do have to follow open meeting laws, which means we do have to be thoughtful and cautious about how um we allowed participants to join our meetings. So certainly a lot of conversations and things that we are thinking about. Um so we are moving on. Again, thank you, everybody. Um the we are at Jen, the first draft of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school calendar.
Hi, everyone. Um I'm actually going to share my screen as well, so that way um everyone can see with the calendar, look slide, including our families at home. Um as typical, uh we have, we present the calendar twice. Uh tonight is just a first viewing of our twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year calendar. Um and then we will bring it back at um a following meeting for a formal vote. Um this year's the calendar for the upcoming school year. Um follows our traditional pattern um where we welcome staff back to school. This year would be on August thirty first, and then we have our Staff Professional Development Day. Um also before the beginning of school, which would be um on Wednesday, uh September first. Labor Day this year is on Monday, the sixth. It's kind of a late Labor Day. Um students in grades one through twelve would return on Tuesday, the seventh. Kindergarten students would return on Wednesday, the eighth. And our little lancers would come um to start their year on Thursday, the ninth. Uh during the school calendar year, we've actually also brought back our Friday early release days for professional development. You can see one on the twenty fourth of September, one on the twenty ninth of October, one on the twenty eighth of January, uh the eighteenth of March, uh and the twentieth of May. Those are early release days for professional development. Um staff and families will also note that the Wednesday before Thanksgiving has gone back to an early release day for staff and students. Um and that the holiday break begins on the on at dismissal on the twenty third through um January third. Uh we do have a, excuse me, we have a traditional February and April break. Um with a hundred and eighty days, we are scheduled to get out on Thursday, June sixteenth. Um and then, as the committee knows, we do have to build in those five snow days with five snow days will be out on Thursday, the twenty third. And our class of twenty twenty two is scheduled to graduate on Friday, June third. Happy to answer any questions or take any feedback on the calendar um from the committee.
Any questions or comments? I can tell you, Jen, I'm getting used to this calendar. If you remember, I liked your your former one, but when I was looking at it, I actually was like, okay, I can I can deal with this, but.
With the other one for a very long time.
I liked it. That's maybe why I got so used.
Been around for a while, yeah.
Um I don't have any questions. Anybody else? Looks like we are good, Jen. Um we were all able to kind of review it earlier and don't have any questions, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
For your work on that, I appreciate it.
We will bring it back um at a four uh future meeting for a vote.
Perfect. Thanks, Jen. Dr. Bayada, a vote to approve the S R O memorandum of understanding update.
Thank you so much. Um let me um see if uh I can recall how to do this. Um I'm getting better, I think. Can you all see that?
Yes, we can.
So let me just explain what this is. This is a memorandum of understanding between the Norton Police Department and the Norton Public Schools as required by the Acts of the Twenty Twenty Police Reform legislation that was just recently passed. So what you're seeing is what myself and Chief Clark have to agree to do. We do not have flexibility in this, and to be quite honest, I will publicly state that I do not support this legislation. Um and I can't speak for the chief, but I think in general that he thinks it's not the best of ideas. Um in general, this uh that's what this does, oops, is um I'm just going to come back live. In in general, what this does is that it it attempts to um require at the S O S R O level um within schools for us to be able to um have more regulations, if you will, more specifications around what can be communicated between the school department and police officers. And they actually utilize um an example of gangs um as one of the one of the um one of the examples, if you will. And the concern that that we have is is does this um tie our hands as a um as a district, and in particular, um the S R O can only be assigned to schools upon the request of the school superintendent. Um and it actually took the school committee out of it um completely. Um where before, it's more of an agreement um between um all of us, if you will. And then the other highlight, and again, I'm trying to put this back up because I hit a button, I think. Oh, boy. Here we go. Um it 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 uses the exact, it uses the example of information around gang warfare, but color, I wanted to do um, I keep getting along, but I'm sorry. I apologize.
Hey, Joe, can I ask a quick question while you're doing that?
Yeah.
This, the the yellow parts are the they're new new language, right? This is not an entirely new um it it entirely new legislation. It's just the yellow parts that are changed, is correct?
Yeah, so that what what happens in the what happens in situations like this with the with the um with the language, can you guys see that? Yeah, all right. What happens with with language like uh with is this the sections that aren't that are on here are the legislative changes that have been added to the prior um information um that was part of this document, if you will. Um and so you'll see the the request um at the place, and then you have a whole idea of this um is brought up um around the idea of gang affiliation and involvement. That's the number one example that's been provided um for this. And the concern that we have is, first of all, that's not really who we are. It doesn't mean that it couldn't happen, but that's not what's happening here. And second of all, it's the realization for us that that our our information that's shared is always in the best interest of students. It's not about sending students to jail, and neither is that the uh the efforts of the Norton Police Department and our two S R Os. Um it it's it's about providing services to students and families that are in need um and want to be supported. Um and may require, for example, a clerk magistrate hearing instead of a judge hearing or goes to a judge instead of having a juvenile uh record, a student is asked to a parent or asked to comply with counseling and support. And I think that can only be a positive thing. Um so uh anyways, I've spoken long enough about this, but in general, um you don't have a choice. The Ness will say, I always have a choice.
I was just, I just was unmuting it, saying, oh, yeah.
You were gonna say it. I beat you to it. And you do the vote.
Um so, Joe, I know you said we don't have a choice, but maybe you can just in layman's terms tell us. Um does this document change the work that our S R Os are doing currently?
No, it does not. What it does is is that we have to be assuring ourselves of asking ourselves in the discussions that we have, are we meeting the law?
Which my guess is is that we are.
Correct.
Right, so um I think unfortunately, as I read through it, I think that the language change um those highlighted areas, I think, you know, for for our town um certainly are are not warranted, and I am a little uncomfortable to sort of say that I agree with that, but at the same time, I absolutely want to make sure that we're all aware that our S R Os um sort of the relationship, the commitment, the communication, um the partnership remains relatively the same. Is that correct?
That's correct. Does that change the the uh general intent of the rest of the S R O agreement between the school department and the police department?
So does anybody else have any comments?
I have a more of a question, I guess. So i- ignoring the idiocy of not sharing data on gang members. So the legislation, you're saying we can't, we can't, we don't have a choice. But I I'm curious, it refers to it refers to school resource officers. Why don't we just change the name of what we're using to student student police liaisons or something like that and then completely blow the side of the water? Like, i- if if we don't approve this, what does that mean? What what's what are the ramifications if we don't approve it?
S- school resource offices are recognized by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts prior to this and since this as the uh direction, the the offices who work with school departments. It's the only one that's named. The only other areas where you go beyond this is, in fact, districts that have their own quote uh police force. In other words, you have assigned police officers, some city schools have that, they have S R Os and they have city police that are involved only with the and I don't think a name.
And they and they would not fall under this type of a mandate then? Is that correct?
No, they they right now, this mandate is S R Os. It's very specific.
Because i- if you don't support it, I mean, quite frankly, I I I read through it and looking at the changes, the, you know, the assigned upon your request, I I think it's fine. I don't see any issue with that. Um the the gang affiliation one, you know, I I completely understand why we wouldn't want to support that, but it wasn't much of a stretch from what they'd already had in there. However, if you don't support it, I don't understand why why we would vote to do it, quite frankly. I think you're on mute, Joe.
In general, an M O U is required between the police department and fire depart- and and the police department and the school department by regulation. Period.
All right, well, well, can I, can I, can I um maybe suggest, maybe we table this vote and and see if we can get Chief Clark's opinion on this as well? I mean, maybe maybe it ends up that, hey, we have to, we have to do it, but I I I'm not, I'm not willing to just jump into the fire because the state tells me to. I I I that's that's not me and it shouldn't be us.
We can, we can ask the chief to come to a to a meeting later in this month and and, you know, give his viewpoint on this.
Yeah, we we don't even have to take up his time in that way, but I mean, if he can just kind of give us his opinion in some way, I if if it's, you know, just an email or whatever, I mean, I'm I'm curious to think what he, you know, to hear what he thinks on this.
Put something in writing to you.
Yeah, I mean, we've we've had a great relationship with those guys. You know, they they've been a phenomenal, a phenomenally additive, you know, process for us, and and I don't want to, I don't necessarily want to do anything to jeopardize that in any way, shape or form, quite frankly.
So I think um, you know, I'm in agreement as well, Joe, that if we table this to one of our future meetings, I don't know if this is time sensitive. I would assume it's not.
You didn't lose me. I you lost me to the dog banging at the door for two seconds. That's why I did hear your question. The answer is it's not time sensitive. I will ask the chief to put his thoughts in writing to the school committee and or attend a meeting, whichever one he wants to do.
That would be great. I think, you know, um um certainly not an expert on this, but even when I was reading the document, I wasn't sure that I fully understood um the reason for it or the language used. So a little clarification, a little bit of um his thoughts as to kind of what he thinks, I think, would really help us. There is the message in the chat box. Um, am I correct in understanding that the document states S R Os are not allowed to report incidents to town police or higher authorities?
The the intent that's given is around what information can be provided. So we'll ask the chief for clarification on what that means, but it's very specific to um uh situations of the intent of what an officer knows and what we know and what we can give to them. It's already somewhat limited to begin with, right? But um this utilizes um in in specific information, and a lot of this has to do with um, you know, that somebody may be involved in something versus someone, you know, was caught in the act of it. Um and so that somebody could be targeted in the wrong way because of their ethnic background, uh because of their race, uh gender, you, I mean, you name it. So um those are the issues that were discussed at the State House on this, when this bill was part of the reform movement.
Yeah, clarification would be great. Thanks, Joe.
I will get it for you.
Um we are moving to another uh sort of conversation on our budget. So Matt, review and vote of the F Y twenty two budget. review and vote of the FY22 budget?
Yeah. So we, we brought the budget forward again. We're still at the 5.55%. We think that this is a pretty strong budget to move forward at this point. The, we're working with, with Mike to try and understand what maybe the direction is that the revenues are, are driving us towards and when what the town could actually support. But we do feel that this is a pretty strong budget as it's put together. It supports all the requests that we got from all the principals and, and department heads. And it, it continues to support both special education and regular education curriculum initiatives.
Thanks, Matt. We had a lot of conversation about this at our last meeting last week. So I'm not sure, does anybody have any questions, comments?
I just have, wasn't there something that we asked to have relooked at in regards to the, I can't remember now. It was only a week ago, but I thought there was something that we asked you guys to look at and we would revisit it this week. Does anybody remember?
I think there might have been some conversation around the use of school choice, but, but not that we were going to, we weren't going to redo it. It was more just a question of why we were, we're using it. I, I shouldn't even say question of why we're using, because I understand fully why we're using it, but more, I think it was more me pointing out that we kind of have a ticking time bomb in the budget. And, and the numbers are getting smaller and smaller. So I, I don't think we were necessarily going to change anything, though.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
It does require a vote.
So Carolyn, I'm going to comment, and I'm sure, again, I'll shock nobody, but you know, I just said there's a ticking time bomb in here. We have to be cognizant of that. And it's, it's, it's not that this is a, it's, it's not that the budget is not what it needs to be right now. It is exactly what it needs to be. And it's being handled the way it needs to be handled. However, as a town, as an entire town, we need to start thinking better about our budget process. We, we are, we are heading towards the cliff. I, I keep saying it, and I know I'm chicken little at this point. The sky is falling. But we have to start thinking or rethinking, I'm sorry, our, our budget process. This is not going to make sense for much longer.
Dines, I think you've always. I think you've always given sort of that point of reason.
Or voice of insanity, one of the two.
So, you know, I really appreciate it, especially as, you know, so many of us are really navigating these numbers and trying to understand them. I think it's always nice to kind of get that, that point, that sort of, that point of reference. I, you know, I don't know how we move forward without utilizing choice money the way that we are, but it's definitely on the radar screen. I don't know, Joe, if you have any comments or.
Yeah, you know, this all goes back to discussions where we've had a long time ago that just don't want to, people don't want to talk about, and that has to do with 10 years of averaging less than 1.1%. It's that simple. It, it eventually does catch up. You know, Matt and I have been looking at the budget because we know as if the budget moves forward, we'll get numbers, the numbers will change and so on and so forth. And we have to be prepared and then come to you to be prepared. And we're working on that, but I'll have Matt share out with you, maybe, maybe at the upcoming budget hearing would be an opportunity of a synopsis that he did and provided to me today that I think would be of interest for you to have that really hits upon Dines's comments earlier tonight.
Yeah, that's why I'd be clear too. Like, I'm, I'm not saying this is a, this isn't a spending problem. This is a revenue problem. And I've said that for years as well. This is a town revenue issue. So it, it's not that this budget is bloated or anything like that. It's simply the reality of the situation. And that is that we're, we're not taking it enough as a town to, to pay for what we need to, to do as a town.
And Matt, I just want to reiterate this, this budget proposal that you have put together, which thank you for all your hard work on this. It's, it's always appreciated. We know it's not easy. This does take into account a reduction in fees for next year, correct?
Yes, we're still holding a reduction in the athletic to $250 and the transportation to 250 plus a, a corresponding reduction in the hockey, which is, I think comes down to 360.
Okay. I just think it's important to remind people that we are trying to eliminate, you know, fees for them that became high because of failed override. So I just wanted, you know, just to mention again that we are trying to reduce fees to make it more palatable for, for families.
I think the concern always is, is we're trying that, but who knows? Sort of, I think that's sort of what Dines is trying to share with us that, you know, we've always wanted to reduce fees. That's always been really a focus. But if we keep moving, sort of, if, if this is our trajectory, then the fees are going right back up, right? Because that is what happened before. And that is why Norton implemented fees, and that's why we potentially at one point had the highest fee sort of in our sort of surrounding areas, even maybe in beyond our surrounding areas. So just something that we all need to think about moving forward.
Well, we may not even get out of this phase of this proposed budget, right? Because we still have to go to the finance committee and, and the town. But I think that, you know, just looking forward as we're trying to move forward with an athletic complex, you know, we're, we're trying to think outside the box. And yes, you sometimes have to spend money to make money, but we're trying to think outside the box to be able to bring revenue in. And I think that trying to reduce our athletic fees, you know, people can understand what we're trying to do. We, we're, we're trying to put something in place where we can actually bring some money in to help offset some of these costs.
Right, exactly, exactly. So thanks, everybody. We do need to vote on this. So is there a motion to approve the FY22 budget?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Kathleen? We'll come back to Kathleen. Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dines?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Thank you. And I am a yes as well. And so, Dr. Bayetta, any additional?
Two quick comments. One, you, you will be receiving tomorrow from Matt, the train update. It's a PowerPoint. Very well done. He'll release it to you. We'll go to Capitol on Monday, the 8th, I believe it is, to give it to them as well. But please review it and we'll take it up at another meeting, but we did that, just received that late yesterday. So that's the reason why we were just not prepared for tonight. But it's pretty self-explanatory, if you will. And then, second, the meeting next Thursday will be a public hearing meeting only. And that will be for the budget and it will be for school choice. So those, those have been published for two weeks. Were published in the local paper and all that, like we have to do. Thanks to Terry. That's all I have.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Thanks, everybody. I think seeing no other business, any other business, if I could just say, I know a lot of people have already left the meeting. Again, I will just reiterate, if you had a question that wasn't answered or you still have questions, if you could please, you know, go on to the school website or reach out using Let's Talk, we would really appreciate that.
Carolyn, can I just mention too, I just want to take a minute to say that tomorrow, tomorrow night should have been our 19th annual It Takes Community basketball game between the teachers and the police officers. So I just wanted to, to mention that, you know, that sadly we can't do that fundraiser this year. But because of the generosity of many, many people at last year's fundraiser and throughout this year, It Takes Community was able to help over 40 families this year dealing with not only loss of family or, or serious illness, but also financial hardships due to COVID. So I just want to remind people that, you know, It Takes Community is still out there. People can still make donations if they want. We do have a Facebook page. Sadly, there are still requests coming in of, of people needing help. We are thinking of some, some different types of fundraisers to, to help. So just keep a lookout for that, like the, the Facebook page, It Takes a Community. And just keep some of these families in your thoughts and prayers as they navigate through some difficult times.
Thanks, Sherry. I have to say, Sherry, you and your team are impressive that as soon as, you know, there's a need or concern, there's always an immediate response. It Takes a Community has already offered support. I don't know how you do it. I don't know how you so quickly turn it around, but it is so impressive, the work that all of you do. So thank you for that.
Thanks. It could be any one of us at any point in time. So it's, it's an important committee to keep moving forward. It's an important committee. If anyone's interested in joining, it, it's, it really does help. And when you see messages from families for, for how much it does help, it, it really, you know, of course, I'm going to cry again because meeting if I didn't cry. Benny waits for it every meeting. It is so.
You might have missed last meeting.
No, last meeting was a little different. I was a little bit fired up, but
Yes.
You know, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the kind words. Thank you.
It's well deserved. I mean, the work that you do, I think it really, and that It Takes a Community does, is impressive. So, and I think, Sherry, you said it best. I mean, it could be any one of us at any moment.
Right. There's a whole team behind It Takes a Community. I just like to promote it on school committee so that people do know that we are still working hard for, for families that need help.
Thank you. So I think we are set.
I would, I would actually, if, if I could, and I apologize again, I was in a bad cell spot during the MCAS vote. I, I, I motioned to reconsider that. I'm not looking to, to change the vote. However, I would like to add my vote. So motion to reconsider the MCAS resolution vote.
Perfect. So is there a motion to reconsider the MCAS resolution vote?
We need a second.
Second, sorry. All in favor? So Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dines?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So do you know, any questions or comments? Seeing then, if we can vote on the full committee resolution, MCAS, or MCAS resolution, excuse me, is there a motion to approve as written?
So moved.
Second?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor? Dines?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thanks for doing that, Dines.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys giving me that time. I, I know it wasn't very long, but it's important to me to, to vote again, or vote for that. I'm sorry.
Perfect. So I think we are good. We are, we got a lot accomplished tonight and you know, the work is still, you know, we still have work ahead of us, but thank you for all of the hard work, everybody. Really appreciate it. It'll be nice to see kids back in school buildings more regularly and full time. So to everyone, have a good night. Is there a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dines?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Hi, everybody.
Good night, guys.